Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Grand Rapids Community College Board of Trustees meeting for Monday, August 18, 2025. I wonder if any of you might have any guests in the audience that you would like to introduce?
I do indeed, if I may. I would first like to introduce John Globoker, who joined the GRCC at the end of June as our Vice President for Finance and Administration. John has a substantial history of serving higher education in financial and administrative roles at Purdue, at Kendall College of Art, then at Jackson College for three years before coming back to Grand Rapids to join our institution. And as you will see later in today's meeting, he's very quickly engaged deeply in his work here and in supporting and leading the finance and administration staff for our institution.
Wonderful.
I'd also like to introduce Dr. Wesley Fox, who is our new Dean of the School of Business and Industry. Dr. Fox began his service to GRCC two weeks ago, Monday, August 14th. He brings more than 20 years in higher education, criminal justice, business administration. He served as interim dean at Teladega College and as dean of faculty at Miami Dade College, overseeing academic programs, curriculum development, faculty management, and accreditation. And we welcome Dr. Fox to this important leadership role here.
Welcome to both of you. So glad you're here. Thank you. Our first order of business today is the approval of the agenda. Trustees, please note that this is the time to remove an item from the consent agenda or separate it if necessary. Are there any additions or deletions, corrections to the agenda? May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Support. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Now, we will open the meeting up for public comment. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, you may do so at this time. Not seeing any, I will move to the next item, which would be consent items. Now is the time that we will move to approve the consent items. May I have a motion to approve the consent items as presented?
Moved.
You have a second, please?
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item, action items. Purchases over $100,000. You have a motion to approve the purchases over $100,000 as presented.
So moved.
You have a second?
Support.
There's a support? Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Board asset protection policy. And so this is something that has come up before, so what might we like to do?
I move to take from the table the motion from the June 9, 2025, meeting regarding changes to the asset protection policy.
You have a second?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So just to restate the motion from June 9, I'm going to read it exactly. It was the Article 5 of the asset protection policy be revised to read "make any purchase over $40,000 without soliciting sealed quotations, nor make any purchases between $10,000 and $999 without evaluating at least three quotations unless there is a policy exception, a single source supplier, or other circumstances prohibiting competitive pricing. A summary report of transactions of $40,000 and above will be presented to the board monthly." That's what we're talking about, folks. And to assist us in getting into this a little deeper, let me call our new Vice President of Finance and Administration to the podium, John Globoker. Did I say it right? Please correct me.
You did great.
Okay, thank you. So colleagues, might there be any discussion? Should we hear from him a little bit? Does he have something to say? Then we'll get to discussion. What might you want to say before we discuss?
Well, first, thank you for providing this opportunity. Good afternoon, members of the board, President Trezenberg and Amy. This is an opportunity for the finance and accounting areas and purchasing to highlight. First, I would want to address the two purchases that are $100,000 or greater. Thank you for that, for the consideration of those purchases. Both will help and support the institution, one being Health Bar, bringing a clinic, health clinic to campus, and the other to modernize our multi-function devices across campus. So thank you for that consideration. As shared within the June board meeting, there were evidence, benchmarking that was provided that proved or shared with you that there were a number of years that had passed that these purchasing limits had not been examined or reconsidered for changing of those, as well as looking at other benchmark institutions within Michigan community colleges of the 28. So we feel very comfortable with those moves, making sure that we are being good stewards of the institution's funds, as well as making it more efficient as well for our institution to move purchases forward.
Thank you. What questions might you have of our new Vice President before we get into even deeper discussion? Questions about anything that was stated?
Would you, just from my understanding, could you provide an example, just a concrete example, of how these policies that are relatively old, they have been revisited in 12 years and 15 years, how they're a hindrance to our ability to say, "look into a health clinic"?
Might you clarify the question for me a little bit more?
The limits as they exist now in the policy? How are they cumbersome for you, or difficult for you?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say where the limits exist now provide for a volume of work that touches a lot of areas on campus, not only within purchasing, which does a great deal of work on the very tail end of the process, but we have, from the origination of it, if anyone is looking to make a purchase, does require them to be aware of the policies and as well as the procedures that follow suit. So it will improve our abilities to be more agile, more nimble, as we look at opportunities on the horizon, especially as costs increase. That's a significant factor. And being able to recalibrate those layers so that the impact to the whole of the institution is minimized, but still keeping our finger on the pulse of being good stewards of all the funds that we are charged with managing.
Okay.
Does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Additional? Go ahead.
First of all, welcome, and thank you for stepping in. My question kind of follows along with Trustee Brian Smas. Obviously, you can't give an exact answer to this, but like, if you had to put a timeframe on changing these limits, how much more agility would this provide you?
That I would not be able to put a timeline on. I would need to consult with our folks in purchasing, as well as those that are active in making purchases, those that are active, say, in facilities or other areas that do a great deal of purchasing, so I could come back and share with you those details. I do have colleagues within the audience that may be able to provide some of that insight presently, if you'd like to find out more now.
Whatever you think is best, but I would like to know kind of what we're talking about.
Sure, certainly. Great question.
I think it's fair, you're fairly new, right? So if you want to add someone to the podium?
All of it. Thank you.
I'd support you too much on the spot.
No, I appreciate your question.
No, you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Jim Vandakenberg, Executive Director of Facilities. These aren't for commodities, but I was trying to think of something while I walked up here. You know, we change with IT a wing of TVs or projectors, or we re-carpet a wing in RJF Hall, those types of things. The numbers rise quite quickly, and so it feels like we could be more effective still following a competitive pricing process without hitting that lid. It's changed several times since I've been here. It was five, and then it was 10, and then it was 25, but I don't think it's changed for some time. So it can hinder the schedule, lead time, if we have to do a formal bid. That's awesome, that's showing excellent stewardship, but it can hit the schedule, and we're trying to do our best work as quickly and effectively as we can. And I think it would really benefit our department and others as well.
Thank you. Might you want to add something? You can.
Do you want me to say more?
If you want to, if you have something more, you don't have to.
Just real quick, what we're finding is, is that with the RFP process, when you're looking at something that is $27,000, that takes about four to six weeks to work through the RFP process. And if we're being good stewards, and we say to Jim or any other department, "you need to have three quotes," it gives them the opportunity to find those three vendors in a shorter period of time, so that we can keep moving on products and services that we need. So that's one of the big reasons why we did it. I will say, what you saw in your report the day, there was probably about four that would have been dropped off, and they would have gone back to the departments to get the bids, or not the bids, excuse me, the quotes.
That helps.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Might you have other questions or concerns that you want to lift up before they leave? No? Any additional discussion? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
So I am going to go through our normal procedure with the questions and the statements that I say now, and so I may seem redundant, but I just want to be clear about what I'm asking. So is there any discussion? Please note that any discussion should be directly related to your opinion in support or opposition. So I think we're at the point of voting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your support.
You didn't really get a chance to be new, but we appreciate all the work that you've been doing. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to ask General Counsel Brett Meyer to come to the podium to present information on the proposed Faculty Association contract.
Good afternoon. I am pleased to be here this afternoon to present to you, for your consideration, a tentative agreement with the GRCC Faculty Association. The agreement is for a five-year contract, which would commence coming up here on September 1, and would terminate on August 31 of 2030. There is a provision in the agreement for a wage reopener, starting after January 1 of 2028. And kind of having outlined that, before I go into the particulars, I do want to say, you know, this was a, as evidenced by the fact that it's a proposed five-year agreement, a lengthy process with a lot of different issues brought to the table, and, you know, a lot of really collaborative and productive discussions between the bargaining teams. And I know some of them are in the room here today, but I do want to say thank you to our Faculty Association team, to our administrative team. So I saw Mike and Megan back there. Mike, our association president, Megan Vandermeil, who was the chief negotiator for the Faculty Association team, Holly Christopher, Dylan Carr, Oscar Neal, Moss Ingram, Martin Hilliard, Matt Meckus, Megan Coakley. Really can't say thank you enough and appreciate them for all of the work that they did. And likewise, with the administrative team, Jason Vincent, Danielle Flammenhoft, Nat Lloyd, Ann Isaacson, John Van Els, Nigel Likely, Sheila Jones, Lisa Thomas, Jessica Blandford. Really also can't thank them enough for, you know, the time and effort that went into this. As I mentioned, it is a five-year agreement. I think it is a very beneficial agreement in a lot of ways for all of the parties. It puts us in a great place going forward. The contract does a few different things. Number one, in terms of larger changes, there's a significant revision to our faculty performance evaluation system, or significant revisions to that, really do a number of different things, but one thing that they do, I think, is address, in some substantive ways, some kind of needed updates there, so that that FPE system really applies to all of our faculty, or does a better job of applying to all of our faculty. That is a large umbrella. Our association includes a number of different positions beyond just our traditional classroom faculty, and we think that's a really positive change. Along those lines, another really positive change that's included in this TA is for the contract, really in some kind of substantive and meaningful ways to address working conditions, schedules, a lot of kind of other things that are unique to some of our non-classroom faculty groups. So our advisors, librarians, counselors, tutorial coordinators, folks in critical roles like that, that I don't think have necessarily been kind of addressed in the way that maybe both teams would have loved in the past, and that's something that, you know, as we go forward and improve contract language, we made a concerted effort to do during the life of this bargaining cycle. So as I mentioned, subject to the, wages are for three years. Economics are for three years in this agreement, but subject to that, what we've done in terms of the economic settlement is gone through and really tried to take our current schedules with a little bit of smoothing in places that I think needed it, and put them in a place where they kind of, from a structural perspective, match up with what we currently do, but in a little bit of a different way, which both teams, I think, felt would facilitate future bargaining cycles and future negotiations, as well as, you know, economics and compensation paid under the current contract. So what we've done there is essentially taken our base wages, our base compensation, depending upon which, for the most part, schedule a faculty member is in, and added to those increases where they previously would have applied for, let's say, tenure, for rank, like associate professor, full professor, kind of along the same lines and in the same way that our prior schedules did, but in a way that I think makes a little more sense to everybody. Subject to that, the increases year by year on all of those schedules are 9.5% over the life of the contract, so over three years, 4% in year one, 3% in year two, 2.5% in year three. The financial settlement also includes a one-time increase of 4% to the overload rate, a one-time, and these are both in year one, increase of 4% to the adjunct rate, a one-time increase of 4% to our rate for hourly employees, so our hourly librarians, our part-time hourly advisors, and a one-time increase of 5% to our coaches' schedules. What all of that does is gets us to a place where we are very consistent with our benchmarks, with median numbers, we're very competitive. When I look at those, and this is something that the teams do during the bargaining cycle, in terms of 15-year earnings, in terms of 30-year earnings, put us in a place where we feel as though the college is going to be very successful in attracting, recruiting, and retaining highly qualified faculty members that continue to do excellent work on a day-in, day-out basis in serving this institution and our students. One final point I'd want to make in terms of the economic settlement here, there is also a change to our dental and vision reimbursement cap program that came out of this cycle. So the cap is currently college-wide, either based on collective bargaining agreements or based on the PMA handbook, $2,575 per person. That includes all eligible dependents. This agreement will keep that number flat unless a person has two or more, so that would be three, eligible either dependent spouses, including the employee under the plan, so eligible subscribers, in which case that number will increase to $3,000. And it is our intention to, subject to your decision, to ratify this today, if that's the case, to go and approach our other union groups, our other bargaining units on campus as well, and implement that going forward. That will be a January 1 of 2026 change. That's a lot of information. Are there questions I can answer?
Anything that you want clarified, comments?
We talked about potentially, and I think you said January 2028, there being a wage reopener?
Correct.
Typically, what triggers those negotiations?
So we have not scheduled out wages in this agreement beyond year three. So we were very kind of deliberate in terms of what that wage reopener language would look like. You'll see some contracts where it will say, you know, either party can reopen wages or financials after a certain date. Our agreement in this TA is that will happen after January 1 of '23, because otherwise our...
It's automatic because it's not set. Got it. Okay.
Other comments, questions, things you want clarified? We have a motion to approve the proposed Faculty Association contract as presented?
Moved.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Amy will now call a roll call vote for the motion to approve this contract. Trustees, Brain?
Yes.
Brian Sma?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Love Lady Mitchell?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Siegel?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to reports. Dr. Trezenberg?
Thank you. I'll begin my report by paying respect to the memory of Stephen Ray, a GRCC instructor in the M-Tech Center, who passed away just over a week ago. So this is fresh for us. Stephen taught in the construction program and led summer camps at GRCC for 22 years. He had a deep passion for excellence in his trade and for instilling that passion and standard of excellence in those who came through his classes. He's left an indelible mark on those whose lives he touched, and his colleagues at M-Tech will feel his absence acutely as a colleague and a friend. We are one week away from the start of the fall semester. Our enrollment target was set at 12,800 students in credit-bearing courses and programs. And as of this morning, we had reached 92% of that goal, which is about 4% ahead of the pace that was set last fall. We'll give you some final enrollment data when that's captured on count day, which is September 4. So we expect enrollment to continue through this week and even through the first week of classes. And with that, the energy and activity on campus is growing steadily as we get closer to the start of a semester. This is always a season of excitement, of enthusiasm, of anticipation, and of anxiety for faculty and staff, as well as for students. For many faculty, the change in our learning management software, from Blackboard to Canvas, has triggered substantial revision and, in many cases, creative reworking of their course content and activities. Enrollment, financial aid, orientation, other student support services have been pumping hard for weeks now to get students into their classes and to help students become aware of the wide range of support mechanisms that are available to them. Student government and campus activity boards have been busy gearing up to welcome students this week and into next week. The Raider Block Party is Saturday. That's a significant event that launches the new school year. We remain very vigilant as the state budget process moves forward, or not, as the case may be. The state has really not worked on the higher education budget since June, when they recessed for the summer. I've been meeting with quite a number of the state legislators from our region to make sure that they are aware of how some of the budget proposals would affect Grand Rapids Community College and its ability to serve our students and community well. We hope and expect that the state budget will be resolved by the end of September, and then any necessary adjustments to our college budget will be brought to the board later this fall. The executive leadership and others also remain very attentive to directives and guidelines coming from the federal government, from the Department of Education, and quite recently from the Department of Justice, and then to the court decisions on many of those guidelines and directives. We've reviewed many aspects of our policies and operations, making some adjustments, but staying true to the core of our mission, our vision, and our values. And finally, in support of an effective and collegial culture for the college, we've initiated or extended several modes of communication. We are convening town halls for faculty and staff every other month. The executive leadership team has been available for drop-in sessions about once a month as well. We've occasionally sent campus-wide messages on substantive matters, and we've begun a less formal bi-weekly message from the president's office called Tea Time to call out items to celebrate, to share things going on in the campus community, and to keep clearly in front of us the mission of this remarkable institution. I'm honored and grateful for this opportunity to lead this institution and to lead the many people at the Community College who are responsible and essential for fulfilling that mission. Thank you. I'll be glad to answer questions that you might have.
Questions, comments? No? Just thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving to the next reports. Looks like you do have a finance update, right, that you want to?
And for that, we'll call John Globoker to the podium once again.
It seems like you've been here longer than what you actually have been there. We threw you deep into it, and you're swimming. You're doing well, so welcome back.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for having the opportunity to share with the board and the campus community the finance update, which includes, to begin with, a purchasing update. I wanted to thank Paula, our Director of Purchasing, for compiling this information, which provides you a compilation of purchases during the month of July that tripped the wire, needing to be RFP'd or RFQ'd. So those purchases are there for your consumption. And welcome any questions that you might have around those.
Questions, comments?
Turning now to the financials. Before I dive into those, I did want to share with you that our accounting and finance teams are active in closing out fiscal year '25, working closely with auditors. Last week, audit team was on-site for their fieldwork, so my thanks and gratitude to our internal team led by Nat and Todd, as well as the Plant Moran team as well. So these are reflective of June 30. These are interim financials. These are not final. Later this fall, you will be presented with... Later this fall, you will be presented with audited financial statements by Plant Moran. So be on the lookout for that. The first is the General Operating Fund, and just wanted to share a few highlights with you, especially around, I'll pick out a few points. On the revenue side, we did meet or beat our budget relative to a couple categories. Interest income, markets have been strong. When you also have greater cash position, that also drives interest income to be higher than expected. So that's a benefit to the institution, as well as state aid outpaced our original budget projections. So revenues were strong in fiscal year '25, coupled with strong enrollment, as well as you can see that our enrollment actuals nearly mirrored that of the budget that was adjusted mid-year. Couple things relative to expenditures. We do budget salaries at 100%, so we get to enjoy any salary savings on the expenditure side as well. And then through prudent purchasing, you see some savings in supplies and expense and other costs. Another opportunity for us as an institution, as a result of strong revenues, prudent spending, we were able to make some significant transfers in support of Plant, first and foremost. Just to give you some perspective, we have over $500 million of fiscal assets that we must be good stewards of, and that helps to finance our deferred maintenance as well as other new projects or renovations. We also were able to transfer funds to our parking fund in support of future costs associated with updates to parking decks or replacement of parking decks. As you may know, that the parking ramp A is circa 1970, so, you know, that is something that we need to keep on our radar as an institution. And then we also were able to transfer funds to our enrollment stabilization fund, which is important, especially with the federal and state landscape that we are faced with and the uncertainties there that we continue to plan ahead for future unforeseen's. Any questions about the general operating? Turn to the Designated Fund, which is a compilation of funds that we set aside as an institution that are very pointed for very specific purposes. We had a strong showing there as well with a Natsur Plus reflected. So I welcome any questions that you might have relative to the Designated Fund.
I can't remember. So can you please remind us, when does the Headley rollback for property tax revenue, when does it kick in, the most recent one?
And I may need to lead on my friend and colleague, Todd. But we were impacted, we as an institution, as a result of the Headley rollback. But Todd, may I have your assistance here?
Yes, the Headley rollback starts with our new fiscal year, so July 1. Summer tax collections, the majority, most of our entities almost all collect in the summer. So we receive the majority of our property tax receipts in July, and the Headley rollback is reflected in that.
Okay. Thank you. So Headley rollback isn't in these that are the temporary up to June 30, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Other questions, folks, or comments? No? Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And then also reflected in your PAC is the Building in Site Fund, also sitting with a very strong positive balance. But keep in mind, we also have some significant projects in the midst of, including the Ford Field House, which is amazing. LRC actively involved in that project, and the College Park Plaza have funds set aside for those significant projects. Something of note, you may notice, is in the budget in maintenance and other. For example, mid-year budget approvals, projects started a little bit later than anticipated. Thus the reason for the less-than-anticipated actuals there. And then following that up with debt retirement, and we're on pace. As shared with you before, an institution of our size, I feel like we're in a really good position, you know, to sunset our debt in 2032, thinking about the future and what maybe debt issuance needs we might have on the horizon. We're in really good position and shape relative to that facet. And then following that up, if no questions, then also included is the cash and investments landscape. That's closely monitored by our accounting and finance team. We're in good shape. We have support from our PFM advisors in making sure that we're managing the portfolio within legal limits of the state, as well as making sure that we are cash solvent so that we're able to meet our obligations.
Questions, concerns, comments? Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Nicely done. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to, it looks like there is not a Faculty Association report at this time?
Is that right? Okay. And so the Board Chair Report. I do want to say a couple different things. Let me start by saying that we are consistently working on the national presidential search. We continue to work with academic search in terms of our consultants. Some of the things that are happening right now are listening sessions and the electronic survey. And when I say those two things in particular, I want to just unpack it a little bit in terms of, folks have been very mindful of trying to ensure that we are honoring the folks who we are most trying to hear from. That's the folks on campus every day who do the hard and heavy lifting. And so being mindful of time and the flexibility of being able to engage through survey and/or voice-to-voice in the listening sessions. And we love that, and folks can speak for themselves related to that. The website has been launched, so folks can check that out. I appreciate that we're not starting in Chapter 1, meaning academic search and the conversations have stitched back to previous listening sessions and the culture and engagement surveys that Dr. Nigel and his team led. So all of it is being stitched together to help us shape this process in a way that's meaningful and that integrates the feedback of the Raider community. So I'm really appreciative of that. The Liaison Committee continues to try to coordinate and support at the satellite view. And then recently, we launched the Screening Committee, which is a cross-sectional group of folks on campus and just starting to talk about what it will look like when we get deeper into looking at actual applications and things like that. What I would love to do is remind people that on the website, there's an email that anyone can use to nominate prospective candidates, and just to stay engaged and follow along as we continue to get deeper in the process. But that process is fully launched, and I'm excited to continue to see where it goes. Moving to my second of three topics. I do want to say, we did have some individuals that came to our last board meeting. And I know I'm not speaking for myself when I say, we, the board loves to hear from individuals that continue to help us clarify our perspective of what's happening and what's not happening in community, GRCC community. And sometimes that introduces cognitive conflict. And I think I can speak for everybody when I say, we're here for that. Not the below-the-belt stuff, but the cognitive conflict that helps us better understand the people who we want to serve. And in serving and listening to you all, it just helps us show up better. So GRCC continues to be the excellent jewel of a resource and learning institution that it is. And so we do want people to continue to show up in community and have conversations with us, and show up here if that helps you get your voice across. But continuing to send messages, I did send a letter to the individuals that came to speak, just thanking them for being here. But like I said, we're okay with cognitive conflict or coming to the table to celebrate things. So thank you for that. And then my last thing that I just want to highlight during this segment of Board Chair Report is more of a reflection of thanks for all the hard work that's going on or that went on related to the negotiations, because we know it takes a lot of time and effort. And more than that, I think the intersecting value is one of a collaborative spirit. And one of the values that I heard is seeing things collectively, but also slowing down to see things individually. So you've seen the different role groups that needed some restoration or needed some difference in order to feel valued, which is our goal. And so I really appreciate that, and just the effort to get things done in a way that's honorable of GRCC. Appreciate that. That concludes my report. And so what I'd love to do is move us on in the agenda, and eventually that will mean opening up the floor to my colleagues to be able to say something. So, community connections. Trustee Williams, might there be something?
There were no communications to the board.
Okay, thank you. That moves us to open comment. So now we will open the meeting up for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding any matter, you may do so at this time. So then, colleagues, final board comments. Might there be any trustee that would like to say any final board comments before we adjourn?
I'd like to welcome Dr. Fox. Thank you. How exciting to have you, of course, and others new to our faculty team. And I wondered, you had, I guess, notated a background in business and criminal justice, and wondered if those two were related.
Any organization, you have to have a business model. You have to have the CJ model. So it's all tasks for people oriented. So to address that question, I'll see you.
Welcome. Other comments?
I just wanted to highlight, Erin, your awesome work around the listening session. I realize it's a whole department, and you're all working as a team, but the people who I asked to be invited all said, like, just very prompt and really appreciate all your work with that. So thank you.
As a former student here, and I remember this, I age myself a little bit. In 2004 and 2005, I was working out in the RAC Center's basement with very little light, and it was just a whole different space. And to see some of the photos of the RAC Center and what it looks like now, it just brought a big smile to my face, and I'm just really excited for all the students and maybe faculty and staff and community members that are going to take advantage of the newly updated spaces. I just want to say thank you to everyone that's been working on that, and also thank you to everyone that is going to be welcoming our new and returning students this fall. Super excited for that.
Let's have a quick story. I was at an event, and this mother came up to me, and she forced her son to come along and tell me this story. She was more excited to tell the story than he was to hear it again. But it was fascinating in the sense that he had gone away to college a couple years ago, and he had a horrible out-of-state experience. And he sort of came home defeated, not knowing what he wanted to do. His mother is a great advocate for the college, and she convinced him to come to GRCC. Came here, was able to graduate, and now he's transferring back to Grand Valley State University. He's super excited about this opportunity. Just another example of how this college can seriously impact someone's life in a positive way. So you have somebody that's, we're happy they're back in our community. He is doing, he's very successful, doing well, and his trajectory just changed significantly. And he was excited about all the teachers that he had and the people that he met. And he is a Raider for life, so it was exciting to hear that story. So we share these stories at this point in time just to make sure we realize how great of institution this is and how we do this every day. Right? So I appreciate what the college has done for this particular family.
Thank you for that.
I'd like to comment on and express gratitude to GRCC's grant-writing professionals, as well as the U.S. Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for a couple of the grants that are listed on page four of our agenda. First, the two grants from the U.S. Department of Education to continue GRCC's very successful Trio Support Services Project, which will provide academic support for 595 low-income, first-generation students in our community. I know firsthand from talking to community members that GRCC, our faculty, put these dollars to very good use. Just this past June, and changed the trajectory of lives, just to tack on to trustee Brain's comments. One community member shared with me this past June that because of the Trio Program, and she specifically mentioned Anna Marie Clark in the Trio Program here at GRCC and the whole Trio Team, she was able to receive the academic support she needed to complete her studies here, transferred to Grand Valley State University, and she's now studying behavioral neuroscience. And that is the Trio Program at work. So I'm grateful for the grantsmanship and also for the U.S. Department of Education continuing that grant for us. Second, I want to talk about the two grants from the West Michigan Area Agency on Aging. Those come from the Department of Health and Human Services to provide wellness and fitness programs for seniors in the West Michigan community. First of all, it's a state law that requires us to give to the wider community and to provide services to our wider community. And second of all, as the daughter of two active 80-year-olds and somebody that is also out in the community and hears from people who have done fitness and wellness programs here, I'm especially thinking of a couple of people at the Lowell Rotary Club. I know that it contributes to the health and well-being mentally, physically, to our seniors. These are taxpayers, these are grandparents, these are parents of students at GRCC. So thank you to the Grants Department, and thank you to the federal government for investing in our community, because it reaps dividends.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Well, staff and trustees, thank you for a great meeting, and meeting adjourned.